Good evening, everyone. And we'll call the meeting to order for the Olentangie School Board Business Meeting of September 25th, 2012. So Becky, if you would please call the hall.
Ms. Dunbar is absent. Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Ms. Fiesel?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
And would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to five?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I think we have an item that you wanted to add to the agenda?
Actually, it's just an addendum to the executive session. It should read to conserve the employment and compensation of public employees. We just made that clear. Instead of compensation of a public employee.
And with that, may I motion to approve the agenda?
One comment on the agenda for the A1, the third grade guarantee. I wanted to move that out of the board action and keep it in discussion.
Well, we'll have discussion for each, but certainly we can address it singularly, individually from the others.
I mean pulling it out from the vote because I just, well, the board just got the policy yesterday.
Yeah.
Let's keep it in discussion.
No, as explained in the emails and at the previous meeting, we were going to be tight on this one because it has to be approved by the September 30th deadline.
Well, we'll, so you can get that full explanation, we'll separate it.
And I believe Dr. Lucas called all of us to discuss that as well.
Correct. I didn't get a phone call.
Pardon me.
You didn't get a phone call?
Maybe it was today I got it.
I got a call.
Well, anyway, I just got the policy yesterday. That's what happened.
Okay, we'll treat, we can treat A through B individually.
Okay.
We all get the policy.
I apologize, you're right. I did get a phone call.
Okay. Well, we'll treat each one individually. May I motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any other comments? Becky, if you would please?
Ms. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And the record will show that Ms. Dunbar arrived at 6:04 PM.
Accident at Polaris. Still cleaning up.
It's okay. It's South Old State. Can we have the next week downtown? I appreciate it. Mr. O'Brien just wanted to make sure.
With that, Mr. Rafe?
Sorry.
We're going to have a presentation on heart tests for athletes. If you would, sir, then you can introduce our guests.
Good evening. And I, um, thank you for the opportunity. I want to introduce Brett and Chad here from EMCOR, and they're going to give you a brief presentation on a program that we piloted here in Olentangie. We were very fortunate that they chose us to start this program, so I'll just turn it right over to them.
And will you be careful to state what the general purpose was, why this is going?
Sure will. Yes. Once again, my name is Brett Douglas.
Oh, speak at the podium because we're recording.
Okay. Once again, my name is Brett Douglas with EMCOR, and I want to, first of all, thank you for your time tonight. What I'm going to be talking tonight and what we did is unfortunately sudden cardiac arrest with our athletes is becoming an epidemic. We're seeing it on our fields, on our courts. Basically, we are, we're seeing this, the best word I can describe this is epidemic. They've seen it in the Olympics. With EMCOR, and just recently, the AHA is allowing us to do techniques with ECHO and EKG, and these are very mobile, and we can take these now to the school systems. So with the leadership of the board and Mr. Rafe, we were able to use the Olentangie School Systems as a charter school. And we really appreciate you allowing us to do this. Mr. Rafe was very instrumental in getting it within the athletic directors and the program. There were some abnormalities found within your school system. And from this point on, we've actually been going to several OCC schools from here, getting several calls from parents, not only in your school system, but others throughout the area. So we look forward to this, and we feel that this has changed the way that things are being done. Up until this point, like I said, we weren't really able to look at the student athlete to see how this has actually happened. But now with your leadership and allowing us to start this program, we're going to see, we're seeing it flourishing throughout the central Ohio. We've actually been up in northeast Ohio, so we look forward to flourishing, to flourish past there. And because of that, we wanted to do a presentation to you, the board, of thanks. And this just says with our gratitude, we appreciate you helping us to get this started. And we also have one for Mr. Rafe.
Wow. And we have, we have, we have.
Nice plate. You're the salad plate. The main course is the salad plate.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. How many athletes did we test?
Um, you guys, for all of Olentangie, you did approximately 300. So we've done, we've done a fair amount. One program that you guys have helped us to really implement is that we want to make sure that every child is screened, whether it's economically feasible or not. So we've started the EMCOR Foundation, which is spearheaded by parents within your school district, Tom and Lynette Ryan, who also helped us to get connected with Olentangie School Systems. They had a child who passed away of sudden cardiac arrest. So the EMCOR Foundation was formed, actually part of a spearhead from what you guys had shown us, and that we are able now with donors to make sure that we can have every kid screened within the school systems. So thank you so much, and we look forward to partnering with you further.
How were the students selected that you tested? Was it just random selection or?
It was. It was just, it was, we had been working through different logistics, and it was the spring athletes, and it just happened to be at the end, and those athletes that were available, we had done it that time. We are actually planning on coming back to all of the Olentangie School Systems this fall, so.
And we see ourselves adding this as part of our normal screening process, moving forward with the athletic physicals and offering it as a service for parents to take part in. The service that they provide is a cost-effective way to get EKGs and.
Correct. And ECHO.
Echocardiograms and their mobile. We did find some student athletes who were referred to cardiologists for further testing, and can tell you, emails I got from their parents appreciative of the fact that we were able to offer this service was very, very moving.
I will, I'll just, I don't want to take a ton of your time, but I've never, I've never been in something before that we've had such gratitude for. And that gratitude also reflects back to you guys as a school board system. We've only been thanked, I can't tell you, it is, it's an amazing, amazing feeling, so thank you.
Are you looking for some consensus of opinion from us this evening about further study or?
No, we just, we really wanted to, you know, in our discussion, Brett wanted to take an opportunity to really thank the district for having the, I guess, courage to go forward with stuff, with something like this and to be a part of it. So it really is groundbreaking testing that, I think it's just another great opportunity that we offer our student athletes. And, you know, the Ryans, Tom Ryan's head wrestling coach at Ohio State and his wife Lynette are just champions of fighting heart disease, and their daughter Mackenzie has spoken to you on behalf of the jump rope program that she spearheads at some of our schools. And so their involvement, it just, you know, it's again, it's an example of the fact that we as a district are targeted for this type of things because we're so high-profile in so many ways. I think it's kind of cyclical, phaseback. This was something that was good that came back to us because of a lot of other good work that goes on throughout the whole district. Thank you.
Questions to write. So kind of given, you're kind of taking a look at the screening process, you referred to that comment. Would we take a look at baseline testing for concussions as well as?
We already do that.
We already do that?
Yeah. We do that for the high school athletes already. There's a baseline test that's administered through Ohio, through our athletic trainers in Ohio Health, so that if they do come back and have a concussion, they can go behind, they're all given that test at the beginning of the season. It's a computer simulation where you answer a series of questions, rapid fire. It's very difficult. I didn't do so well on it.
Don't have any excuse of a concussion?
It's got a baseline, so we know where we're starting.
That's right. That's right. I started deep in the hole.
He walked right into that.
Uh-huh. Set it right up.
Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I have five items for the board president's report this evening. Number one, I did attend, as did Jeff Gordon for the district administration. Recently, over the last two Wednesdays, the PAL Planning and Zoning Commission's developer presentation and discussion for a proposed project that would take land at Salmenee and Sawmill Parkway and convert it to apartments from condominiums, and that potentially could represent 550 apartments. And then the Wednesday following, and last, was Liberty Township's zoning commission meeting where they're talking about similarly changing from a use of condominiums to apartments, and that could result potentially in 500 units. There are two other projects that I am generally familiar with. I don't have a lot of detail, but I believe that both of them are in the Orange Township community. And we've talked about making sure that we stay on top of what those presentations are and the ramifications of those potential projects. And likewise, when we get an idea of when those meetings are as well as PAL, Liberty Townships, I will continue to go to those to learn about those developments. Jeff Gordon did a very nice job presenting the facts to these two groups, the numbers, what the impact is to Olentangie schools. He did not testify in the sense of providing an opinion as to whether the district was in favor or not in favor, but he did listen, gathered information, and provided information. I have met recently with Ralph Al, who chairs the Development Committee, and we are going to be scheduling a meeting with Dr. Lucas, Ralph, and myself, and a board member in addition, so whether that would be Stacy, who's the official liaison to the committee, or Kevin as vice president. The purpose of that is to, of course, help the Development Committee understand how we move forward into the future, especially as we're not so focused as we were on building a new building every year. And now that we have 25 buildings, the maintenance of those buildings, et cetera, it's really a definite change of plan. Not that new construction or additions to buildings, et cetera, don't go away, but there's definitely a near-term and a long-term focus that we need to deal with, and we will have that meeting shortly to help the Development Committee move forward. I also spoke with Marty Johnson, chairs the 2020 Committee, about its progress. And over this summer, for a couple of reasons, it sat fairly quiet. We are back in production with that, if you will, in process, and suggested that we get together soon, and we did that this morning, to sit down and move forward. The 2020 Executive Committee was Keith, Marty Johnson, myself, Linda, and Taren Truitt. We're in discussion this morning to help move that process forward. And I'm not here to give you a report on that, really. I just wanted everybody to know that we're having that conversation. We will continue to have that conversation to move that forward. I will just say this, the OTA has assigned five members, which includes Ms. Eddy, who will become members of the overall 2020 Steering Committee. We look forward very much to their involvement as we move the process forward. Let me go over with you our upcoming agenda for the work session of October. The highlights of that will be the first reading of our five-year forecast and a CPI update. So that would be the important aspects of that meeting. We, at the, at the business meeting in October, the second meeting, Jeff Gordon will present information to the board on having attended those planning commission meetings regarding the apartment projects that are being proposed. At the work session, and we'll provide more details about location, et cetera, but we will be doing a tour of the Career Center, Delaware area Career Center that Julie has set up for us, so we look forward to doing that, as well as, of course, the work session Then my last item is to mention that the Olentangie Education Foundation had their annual golf outing yesterday. Fabulous day. I don't know that they've ever had a better weather day. It was a great turnout, very good pace of play, just a fabulous day. I'm not sure yet how much money that they've netted towards, as you, I'm sure, are all aware, what they give in teacher grants and scholarships, but of course, as soon as I hear that information at their next board meeting, I will pass that along in the president's report. Just as an aside, the members of the board who were in foursomes did better than the members of the administration in foursomes, so just, just an aside. Now, there was Mr. O'Brien's foursome that did come in first place, but as I understand, there's been an official inquiry.
Right there.
So we'll see how that goes, but congratulations, they took first prize. So with that, that's my president's report. Sir?
Aren't you supposed to let the bosses win? I'm sure that's what happened.
No question. I'm not even going to respond to that, actually. Well, good evening, everyone, both at the board level and in the audience. It is, it seems like it's been a while. And when you, when you think about it, we've actually, we had our last business meeting August 9th, I believe, so it has been somewhat of a while, and a lot of things have taken place. First and foremost, of course, is the fact that we got into another school year. A few things that I want to talk about this evening. The good thing piece, we have seven national merit semifinalists, and of course, there are the names, and if you go down through, I'm not going to name each name, but if you see the balance down through there, I believe there are two from Olentangie, two from Liberty, and three from Orange. And of course, these students and committed scholars will be honored during our business meeting on October the 23rd. So we offer those individuals congratulations, and as they say, here's a list of the best of the best. And considering the fact we have 17,000, approximately 17,500 students, that's quite a list, and that's a great honor, and we congratulate those individuals. We also had 57 students that earned perfect scores on a section of the 2012 OAA or OGT. And of course, as you know, in regard to those results, they will be released soon, we hope. As I called, the generic report card will come out, and then the real report card. Now, we were saying, or we were hearing that it would be after the first of the year. Now we are hearing it's probably going to follow the, what I call the generic, about 30 days after. So we probably get the results sometime in October, and that's when we can talk, start talking about the banners on the wall again, because as you've already heard, we did extremely well. Our average composite ACT score up to 24.8, I believe last year was 24.2, and of course, the state average is 21.8. So we are well above that average. We do know that we need to continue to work to move that up further. We want to get above that 25 mark for next year, and I'm sure with the staff and the efforts of our students, we will continue to work toward that. I might add, by the way, not only did our score go up on average, but the number of kids taking the ACT also continues to go up, which is usually a combination of a decrease. You know, the number of students that they take the test go up, the score usually goes down, but we are going up as we continue to have more students take the test. Becky, we'll get more into this, but Moody's affirmed our AA1 rating and confidence in management of the district. I believe you have the summaries of those two reports, of both Moody's scanning report. If you don't, I'll make sure that you get those, or Becky will make sure. We're going to talk a little bit more about that here a little later in the board meeting. Last but not least, we have a diversity forum with Dr. Melanie Killen, and that's October 4th at Liberty High School, beginning at 7:00 PM. And of course, Dr. Killen has been on CNN. We're looking forward to a great night with her and with the individuals from the community for that community forum, and I would invite all of you out on that evening of October the 4th. We did add this, I'm not sure why, the OEF golf outing. We'll talk a little bit about that. I'm not going to add to what Dave said outside of the fact that it is good to see that the board members doing well in that golf outing, and I'm not sure what that measures, but I do know that it is a sign that all work and no play makes Wade and the others a dull boy, and you can tell that there's too much work going on and not enough play, I guess. That's as good an excuse as I can come up with, actually. Race to the Top update, as you know, we're supposed to update the board on a, on a monthly basis on Race to the Top 2012-13 budget is $46,091.72. Again, we've talked about this, over the last two years, we've taken in $92,000. In a $140 million budget, that's not a whole lot. We talked about when we first entered the Race to the Top, the whole piece of being able to be at the table, have the conversation. It is a credit to our staff members for being at the table, because for all intents and purposes, I do not want to downplay $46,000 at all, but there are districts in this state that are getting millions of dollars for Race to the Top, and of course, we're not one of them. Scope of the work topics, though, does include transformation team, transparent communication, standards and assessment. You know, we've talked about core curriculum, how we're going to implement. Those are all conversations that take place, using data to improve instruction. This shouldn't look any different, actually, than what it looked before we were in Race to the Top. And I think that's one of the reasons that we got in, in talking about great teachers and great leaders. So that is your monthly update on Race to the Top. I want to talk a little bit about what Dave kind of alluded to earlier, the proposed apartment complexes. We're carefully monitoring three developments, both Sawmill Parkway and Salmenee Golf Village North, and Worthington Road is one that is on the radar screen. I look at the crowd, and I respect the fact that we all have different viewpoints about the school system, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent, but I think this is one topic that we all can agree on, and this is one topic that can somewhat bring us all together in regard to what this, this whole proposed apartment complex or complexes could do. From my standpoint as the superintendent and looking out at that, additional students, as you know, we're talking about a .15 yield, or a .45 yield, or a .30 yield, or whatever that may be. Here's the bottom line, more apartment complexes mean more students. More students mean additional costs. We're currently spending $9,465. More students also mean the potential of redistricting sooner. More students also mean the potential of needing additional buildings sooner. That means more bond issues. Bottom line is this, the dreaded L-word, levy. You're talking loud and clear, and I think that's something that we all have to really educate ourselves on, really understand what's taking place in all these proposals. We're going to keep you up to date, I think, as Dave mentioned, we're making that a work session item. Mr. Gordon will be here to kind of share with the board exactly what he's hearing, what he is also sending message-wise from the school district at these different zoning hearings. So I think this is one that we all need to really keep an eye on and stay on top of because it's going to affect us, plain and simple. Some of the agenda items we're talking about, we are approving Chris Saban as the Olentangie Orange Middle School Assistant Principal. If you recall, I believe back in August, we approved him as a teacher on special assignment. That's because he did not have all the coursework slash documentation done for his principal licensure. He now has all of his coursework and paperwork done for his licensure, so therefore, as they say, he is an official administrator. You also see in that agenda that we are accepting his, or I'm recommending that we accept his resignation as a teacher on special assignment and hiring him as the assistant principal. We're also approving new teachers that were hired since the August 9th board meeting, for the most part. We got just about everybody hired, but not quite, probably three or four more, so we are approving those new teachers. Obviously, they have started in the classroom, and this is one of those approvals once after the fact. We also had two supplemental contracts, I believe it's item 13 and 14. Ian Brun and Melanie Williams, I believe, are on there from before. That was one of those supplementals that fell through the cracks, as they say, considering the fact that we approve roughly 1,000 supplementals per year. Every year have one, two, three of these. We don't like it after the fact, that we find out about it once those individuals show up and want to get paid. So therefore, we have to go through the process of actually approving the work that they did, and that was after the fact, or is after the fact. Also, through our supplemental committee, we had a recommendation to add a high school diving coach in the district. That's one diving coach for the district in lieu of one diving coach per school. If you've been following our swimming program, you know that it's a program that is growing rapidly. In fact, we got to the point this past year, due to, you know, the Delaware Y opening late, that we had to go through some cuts. We don't want to do that. I think it's going to be a better situation this year with more pool availability, and with that, we have to add that high school diving coach for the district. And you did get all the updates and recommendations of the supplemental committee in regard to adding that position. Last but not least, we are, I'm recommending that we accept the resignation of Andrew Kerr, Facilities Director. We thank Andy for his services. I don't believe Andy is here this evening, but he will be leaving us for other employment in the future. Other agenda items, we have the authorization of disposal of unusable items through an online auction. I believe that's items that basically have outgrown their worth, and worth anywhere from $500 or less, and we'll auction those off online. We are upgrading our Cisco Call Manager. We are approving the purchase of 450 tons of road salt. It almost depresses me to put that on because I know with that approval means winter's not far behind. I might add, we bought, we bought salt last year at about $70 a ton. This year, it's about $59 a ton, so it is going down, and we're asking for approval to purchase 450 tons of that. Before I get into how I spent my summer, and by the way, this isn't how I spent my summer, Chris Dice and others in the district kind of put together a nice video that I want you to watch. Olentangie teachers often spend their off month furthering their own education. We've talked about OPDA and the professional development that we offer in coursework, but we also have a tremendous number of individuals that do volunteer work, go worldwide to enhance their educational opportunities, and what we wanted to do is kind of put together something, a video highlight, to kind of showcase the summer activities. We had many of these, but we had to choose one at the elementary, one at the middle, and one at the high school level. So before I show these, I wanted to share a couple of things about the school district that I received today. One was actually a handwritten letter, and in today's world, that's hard to find. Louise Stoffer actually writes, she apologizes for handwriting a letter. How about that? That's a different world. It says, "My computer is having problems and my feelings are, but my feelings are fresh, so I wanted to get my thoughts." I'm not going to read the whole letter because it's four pages. It says, "I'm continually blown away by the quality of teachers and staff in this school district. I grew up in the Catholic system and..." I grew up in the Catholic system in Toledo, and my education doesn't even compare to what my kids are receiving. Where do I begin?" She talks a little bit about Liberty Tree Elementary and Terry Caton. She talks a little bit about Hyatt's Middle School and Kathy McFarland. And then she gets into where her kids are now, and that's Liberty High School and Randy Wright. And again, I'm going to be sending you this letter. I just want to make you extremely aware of it. And at the end, it says something, and I'm not saying this because of me. I say this because I get to say this every day. It says, "Dr. Lucas, you know, you are leading one of the best school districts in the state. What an honor, and I'll add to that, what a privilege, and way to go." So I want to send that along to you, because it comes straight from the heart. And it also comes from someone who has kids in the system, which brings a different perspective. This other one, though, I want to share with you, because it comes from an individual by the name of Steve Bennett from Hilliard. As they say, you can't be a prophet in your own land. So therefore, as I sit up here and talk, I should be biased, because I love the place. But this is an individual from Hilliard that says, "I'm a parent with kids in the Hilliard City School District, and have been looking at the academic performance of similar districts in size to Hilliard here in central Ohio, including Olentangie and Dublin, both high-performing districts. Looking at OD data, I've noticed that Olentangie's increases OAA, OGT performance, especially among top students, at a faster rate since the 2008, 2000, or 2000, I'm sorry, 2007, 2008 school year. Olentangie students perform and participate at a much higher rate on ACT as well." And he goes on to say, "In addition, I noticed your district's annual report, of which you will get in November, on academics that track several ambitious performance goals. It is the most comprehensive report that I have seen for any district so far." Again, I'll go back to this piece. Sometimes you don't know what you have, because you can't see the forest for the trees. But it's always very good to get emails, like one from Hilliard, and like a parent that has kids in the system. And with that said and done, I want to share how I spent my summer. Again, not me, but Chris, if you would.
Absolutely. So I took a number of classes through Olentangie's professional development this summer, quite a few on technology. I've learned a lot of different opportunities for free ways to question students online, where they can text in their answers, and it's like a pulling device, where they can use their cell phones to text in like an A, B, C, D answer, and immediately it will show up on my board. When I ask a question, it shows up on my board, what percentage think each answer is correct? So it's a great way to get quick feedback for me, and also for the students. We can discuss it. If I see 50% have a wrong answer, I'm able to quickly go back and reteach that. Also, this is a fun opportunity for students to use technology that they know a lot about and have access to in their classroom. New experiences help me in the classroom, just by keeping the learning fresh. I think it's easy to get stagnant in my teaching. If I keep doing the same thing, and I don't try and upgrade what I'm doing, or change it to be applicable to the times. So new experiences are helping me to constantly add new information to what I'm teaching, new ways to teach it, to make it more relevant to students. And new ways really to help students understand, and for me to see exactly what they know, what they don't know. So better ways to give me feedback, that I can improve my teaching even further. One of the best things I learned this summer that I would love to share with my students this year is to share what I learned with them, for them to see that learning doesn't stop when you're done with high school, when you're done with college, but that you can keep learning throughout life.
My summer plans were to try to do some different adventures with different kids, and every summer I had some kind of adventure, whether it's cycling. A couple of years ago, I did the Pan Ohio, or working for Habitat for Humanity. So this year, I wanted to go back to cycling, but how could I do cycling with kids? And so that was my summer plans, and I found a great project. It's called the Bronx Lab Project. It was a cycling trip for kids from the Bronx New York City School to learn about the Underground Railroad, but more importantly, to even learn about fitness, and building a fitness routine, and sticking with a schedule, and building up that to finish from start to finish. So their trip started in Cincinnati, and I met them in West Jefferson. And we rode from West Jeff to Mechanicsburg, and then back again. And the great opportunity we had in Mechanicsburg is we were able to meet with the mayor and learn about the Underground Railroad and the process that took there with the story of Addison White. And it was really amazing to see these kids learn about their story, but not only that, was to keep cheering them on, being their cheerleaders. Some of them were getting really down, and they just wanted to walk, leave their bike, and walk the rest of the way. And I was like, no, we've got five miles, we can make it to lunch. Of course, there's multiple events that happened through that, some educational experiences, some camping experiences, and just some giving back opportunities as well for them. My most profound key moment of this summer was getting to learn about a different culture for myself, but also what I was raised in. And the profound thing that I found out there is that even though your age sometimes doesn't matter when you find out a new experience, or you're shocked by something. And it was just really an educational summer through this experience that I had, seeing kids and culture and learning about their history.
My summer plans were to finally get a chance to see a country in depth. Before this time, I worked for the airline, retired a friend, becoming a teacher. Three years ago, I retired from the airlines and worked there for 18 years. And all my trips are a little stolen week here, five days here, four days here. Now, with the time that we get off in the summer, I could really see a country in depth. I spent my summer in Armenia and Georgia. Those are in the Caucasus Mountains, kind of between Turkey and Russia. And it was really amazing, because they're two tiny little countries, and most people probably couldn't pick them out of the map. And they have some amazing scenery, so a really amazing culture, very beautiful. I took over 1,000 photos there, and a lot of stuff that I can't wait to use in class in the fourth quarter when we teach about medieval Europe. I would probably say the most profound moment from this summer would be really getting to know the monasteries of life, and what the people, how important religion is to the Jordanians and the Armenians. When I would go into the monastery, and I'm going as a tourist more than anything, and you see what it looks like. Many times, I came in on service, and I hear the service, you know, the Eastern Orthodox service, and those languages. It was really amazing. And you take a look, and they like to build the monasteries on top of mountains and hills, and they're all way by themselves, and have amazing views. And you pile all that together, and it really becomes an incredible experience. I can use the new experience, I can use the places at dawn, to not only give me ideas for lessons, but also to really rivet the attention of kids. When you say, you're in the middle of a lesson, you say, well, when I was there, you just see all the, it swivels right onto you. They rock onto you, because they want that. They want the personal experience, and they want to know about it. They want you to make it real for them. And it gives me so many insights, so many stories to tell them. It's not just, you know, the content, it's also making the content come alive for them. And my travels to the other countries, I've been to over 75 countries now, really make me able to have something that really connects with all the kids, something that they go home, they go, wow, Mom and Dad, I guess we're learning social studies today.
Any questions for Dr. Lucas, his report? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And Becky, Treasures Report.
Just have a couple of things. Yes, yes. First, I wanted to say that we are, you did mention that we're going to talk about the fiber forecast at the next board meeting. The Finance Committee did meet on the 17th and reviewed the forecast and the assumptions. So it's all good, which is a first, I'm excited. That's just a little teaser, we won't give away too much, right, Heather?
Yes. I mean, some of the dialogues are starting to come together, right? So one of the things we're going to see when we do see the fiber forecast is continued compression in tax revenues. So how do you balance the pressure on the forecast with the development opportunity? And understanding what's the right development opportunity, and how that affects, you know, the fiber forecast? Not all development is bad, it's just how do we, from a formal point of view, or make sure that the district's interests are understood when development decisions are being made? In fact, we're in a loop on this, so tying the forecast to these development issues to the Development Committee, which is an important construct to get through in the next two to three meetings, to make sure that the district's in a good spot, you know, to react to this.
Then we also did the bond refunding just a couple of weeks ago. And we actually closed that today, and so I asked Mr. Sprag and Mr. Tiggott to come and kind of fill you in. We did really well, the market was great that day. So Mr. Sprag and Mr. Tiggott, if you'd like to talk to the podium. I also asked Brad to talk about the rating presentation. He spoke with the analysts, going to give an update about what their thinking is with the district, and why we didn't get the upgrade to Tripway.
Before I begin, I do believe you won an award yesterday at the golf outing as well.
Now Brad, we weren't going to talk about that.
Proud winner of what place?
With the highest score.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for having me. And today, we did close on a $22 million bond issue for the district. $19 million, $19.9 million of that bond issue was to refinance issues that were done in 2004 and 2005. And $2.1 million of it was to permanently finance notes that the board authorized and issued last year. The refunding portion of this issue was truly unique in that we sold bonds on a taxable basis. Traditionally, school districts, as you know, cities, counties around the state, sell all of their debt on a tax-exempt basis. The federal government only allows us to refinance our debt one time, on each issue, on a tax-exempt basis. We had taken advantage of those opportunities in 2004 and 2005. Rates have continued to fall, and we were sitting there saying, where rates are today, we wish we could refinance them again, but we can't on a tax-exempt basis. Rates have fallen so low that it made sense for the district to refinance its tax-exempt bonds with taxable bonds in today's market. On a taxable basis, the district earned an interest rate of 2.36% for an issue that, with an average life of approximately eight years. And in present value savings, we generated $1.6 million worth of savings off of those issues. Those are parameters that we would have gladly done on a tax-exempt basis, had we been permitted to do so. So the decision to move forward on a taxable basis was quite straightforward, quite simple. I believe that the district is the first, that I'm aware of, in the state that has refinanced tax-exempt bonds with taxable debt. I suspect you won't be the last. And the city of Columbus did a similar transaction at approximately the same time the district is yours. It's sort of interesting that the taxable rate was 2.36%, and the new money, the 2.1 million of notes that we did, that was tax-exempt, and it was 2.7%. The average life of that part of the loan was a little longer, so that explains the difference in interest rate. But taxable rates are almost on top of each other in today's market. So we, the district did take advantage of a somewhat, what I consider, unique opportunity. Becky asked me to talk a little bit about the rating process. And Dr. Lucas, in your presentation, you mentioned that we had our AA1 Moody's Rating confirmed, which is the second highest rating you can get. The only step up is to AAA. We also had our AA+ Rating from Standard &amp; Poor's confirmed, which also is only one notch removed from the AAA category, which we continue to try to achieve. And I just want to take a few minutes, I think, to explain to you all the factors that go into the rating process. Because a lot of people think that that rating is simply a reflection of numbers. Bond rating must have to do with financial results. And financial results do have a place in the rating, but there's several other factors that go into it. Certainly, demographics go into it. And Olentangie has very strong demographics, with high income levels, high wealth levels, high property values per capita. The quality of our tax base is very, very strong. Those are pluses. Our financial results are strong. But the thing, but our debt burden is high. And our debt burden is high because of the tremendous growth that this district has experienced over the last decade and a half, and the need to, for how many years, open a new school every year. That debt burden is the only thing that is preventing Olentangie schools from achieving the AAA rating. The final factor that goes into the rating decision is management. And that, I do believe, is where Olentangie separates itself from the pack. And the rating analysts have said that, in no uncertain terms. And what I mean by management, is financial management certainly. And they're pleased with the forecasts, they're pleased with the budgeting process, and they're pleased with the financial results. But that's not the only form of management that they concern themselves with. What is the quality of your product? Believe it or not, is a very important component of your bond ratings. Why? Because a school district is no different than a private company. And if a private company has good financial results today, but is putting out an inferior product, they're not going to have good financial results for long. And the same is their view true of the school district. So the things that we were talking about this evening, or you were talking about this evening, in terms of your achievement over the last several years, and what your report card is expected to look like this year, and the programs that you offer are critical components in your bond rating. Voter support is probably the number one factor that enables this district to maintain such a high credibility. You've gone over a decade of going to the voters and getting approval each and every time, for a whole variety of reasons, of which I don't know all of. But I do know that you have a tremendous citizen infrastructure in place in this district, with Olentangie for Kids, and with the various committee structures that you have, including the Development Committee and the Finance Committee. And these are, and the parental support in general, and satisfaction with the product. And all of that gets translated at the ballot box. And it's that, that management and those results that the rating analysts cite as the reason that this district is rated as high as it is. I think that, as the growth begins to slow, as it is, we're going to be able to make a very strong case to get upgraded into the AAA category. And if you look at the AAA credits around the state, and there's only a handful, all of them are in the mature district category, not the high-growth category, because their debt levels have leveled out. That's the next step, and it's a step I hope we can achieve shortly. But I did just want to make you aware of the factors that go into it, because I think all too often, people think bond ratings, and they think numbers. The numbers set the stage, but everything else also has to be in place. The last thing I'd like to mention is that we also maintain a millage model on all of your debt. And as you all know, the policy of this board has been to maintain bond millage at 8.72 mils. And on the last two bond issues that were presented to the public, they were told that that pledge would be kept, and that the millage rate would not rise above that level. And even in the face of the lowering of assessed valuation, the latest millage model shows that that promise is indeed going to be able to be kept. Yes, we're going to have to draw down reserves that have been built up over the last several years, but that we hit the, get over the bubble in 2018 or 2019. And we're in very, very good shape to maintain that pledge with voters. And I'd also like to thank David Tiggott from Fifth Third for being here. Fifth Third Securities was the underwriter on the transaction. And they always do a good job, but on a taxable transaction, which is a little different, I thought they did an exceptional job. I'd be happy to field any questions you might have.
That's a good presentation. All right. Did you answer this, the $13 million, that's for the refinancing?
No, that was, if you remember earlier in the year, we, the board approved the transfer of the residual money from the bond fund into the debt service. So that goes in there, that helps with the millage model, but it's not tied directly to this refinancing.
Becky, you just spent on a clamor golf course, I meant to say that as well.
Other questions or comments?
I appreciate very much you explaining that process of achieving ratings, that was very helpful. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
And I believe it was about an 8 percent savings that we saw from that refunding, so that was really good. Usually our target's at least three or more, so 8 percent was a great, great savings. It was a good day in the market.
And before, do you have any other comments on voter support?
No.
I just wanna make sure, in case it wasn't obvious, that Kevin did attend the recent Finance and Audit Committee, so appreciate you doing that, and keeping our board in touch with that great committee. Before we move on, I'd just like to announce that there is a gray Acura, or Accura, I guess it is, isn't it, blocking road outside. So, that would belong to somebody in the room here, if you could please move your car. Okay, public participation? I think it's John Waldenthal, is that correct? Thank you, sir. And if you would, please give your name and address.
My name is John Mark Waldenthal. I reside at 5241 Polar Drive in Lewis Center. My daughter, a National Merit Scholar, was a member of the Olentangie High School class of 2012. My son is a junior at Olentangie High School, and will graduate in 2014. This is, I guess, my fourth time here, but the first time speaking. I was very interested in the turf, particularly Mr. King's analysis, which was unique, and why do we have an emergency fund? And what is it actually, everybody wonders, what does it take, if we have pledges, what does it actually take to, where you can guarantee those, pretty much guarantee those pledges? And you're the only person who can actually address those. I want to thank you for bringing that to the turf discussion. My previous two times were thanks to my daughter's achievements, nothing on mine. My comments are, the context of my comments are gonna be Exhibit A2, when I get the specific comments, but I just want to talk about transparency, not per se, but more of the patience transparency requires.
I'm sorry, those are action items, and this is for general comments?
Right. I just, I just wanted, I just wanted to say, this is for, this is to kind of set the stage for that later. When I moved here from Texas in 2003, I specifically chose to live in Olentangie Local School District. I was also considering Big Walnut, Westerville, Worthington, and Dublin School Districts. After brief research, I quickly decided absolutely against Big Walnut. Why? They had recently repeatedly failed to pass a levy. If the board was not communicating needs sufficiently to the voters, the relationship between the board and the citizens was becoming too dysfunctional, becoming unhealthy. Those of you who live in Orange Township might recall a particularly contentious election several years ago for township trustees. One of the challengers saw that the Township Fire Department was buying a 100-foot ladder truck to replace an older ladder truck. 100 feet tall? There are no structures in Orange Township with that sort of height. The candidate loudly trumpeted, "This expenditure is a waste of taxpayer dollars." After incredibly long time, the incumbent finally pointed out that the ladder truck was chosen because it could send horizontally over large flat buildings like Walmart, Kohl's, John Eagle, and all those other large buildings along 23. Full information deflated the claims of the challenger, but perceptions remained, and they're powerful, even when they were wrong. The challenger did not win the election, but neither did the incumbent. Full information, transparency leads to trust, and trust can motivate people. But distrust also motivates people, and often more strongly. I perceive that there is some frustration with one board member. That board member, like the rest, was elected by the people in the Olentangie Local School District. That board member's real constituency is concerned that there may be significant waste in the school district. There may be, there may not be, I don't know. And even if there were significant waste, the additional cost it would take to reduce that waste through monitoring and management may exceed the cost of the waste itself. You're like skipping oil changes on your car sometimes, right? Penny wise, pound foolish, we've all heard that. Sometimes it costs, sometimes you want to pay upfront a little bit more, so you get good results in the end. The board can choose to ignore that constituency. It can formalize procedures, rearrange responsibilities to stonewall it. It can design policies to release as little information as possible, or it can go out of its way to be as transparent and open as possible. It can try to move slower when possible, so the consensus can be reached through careful analysis of the information by all interested parties.
You have one minute left.
If the claims of waste are inaccurate, open information and time to analyze will show that. This Sunday's Dispatch had an article titled, "School Districts Find Organized Opposition Is Increasingly Common." This article discusses the recent increase in anti-levy groups. I am worried that Olentangie Local School District will see that sort of organized opposition in the future, if this constituency feels their concerns are being ignored. In short, you have a very difficult position. There's a growing group of citizens who are concerned, accurately or not, that their money is not being spent appropriately. Frankly, most of these citizens are not gonna do the legwork to prove or disprove their concerns. So, it becomes the board's responsibility to educate not just our children, but us grownups as well. To the degree that the board wants the community's backing on levies and bond issues, this doesn't mean talking with and convincing every citizen one-on-one. Why pay retail when you can have it for wholesale? Convince someone whose opinion they respect. Whose? I'd nominate the board member. Convince Adam that there is no way, convincing him will certainly take more time and effort, but as long as you have him convinced, I'm confident there will never be an organized anti-levy group in Olentangie Local School District. I believe this district has nothing to hide. Please prove me right.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Solomon, and if you would, Becky, I'm sorry, would you give the time?
Yes, we have 30 minutes for each public participation, and each individual speaker has five minutes. Please state your name and address.
Carl Sullivan, 2135 Sherborn Lane, Liberty Township. I was heartened to hear the comments of the gentleman, because I think that on a number of issues, I have been a critic of the openness and the transparency on a variety of issues coming from the majority of this board. A perfect example is the proposed artificial turf project that he mentioned. Others have spoken against this turf project, and over 200 people signed an online petition expressing opposition to this expenditure. We've been told that the board will not support this project unless it is 100 percent financed by outside donations, and I was heartened to hear that and pleased to hear that. However, many people remain skeptical of these initial funding commitments, and we also remain just as concerned about the ongoing maintenance costs of these artificial turf fields and the eventual replacement costs, which I have been told will likely be borne by the Olentangie School District, i.e. the taxpayers. In my view, this is very much like the federal government, which provides first or second year grant money, and thereafter, the cost is entirely paid for by the states or local government. In this case, some who favor this artificial turf project have misled the public into thinking this project is going to be fully underwritten by private donations. It is not. The cost of this project is not fully underwritten if the district is going to be saddled with the maintenance costs. The cost of this project is not fully underwritten if the district is going to be saddled with the replacement costs in eight or so years. I've heard no one on this board or the superintendent talk about who is going to pay for this turf replacement in eight years, and what the apparent or approximate cost may be. In fact, we've heard very little substantive discussion of this turf project at any public Board of Education meeting. As with other major expenditures, this board seems to forget the need for transparency and compliance with Ohio's Sunshine laws. In closing, this board has touted the fact that the need for a levy will be pushed back four years rather than three. Let me suggest to you that is a poor standard. We should be able to defer any future levies out at least six years if this board exercised any kind of fiscal responsibility and restraint. The turf project is unnecessary and unsustainable, and I ask that it be turned down. Thank you.
I'd be happy to go ahead.
There is no current turf proposal, so we've issued a framework to the various booster groups that would provide them with a way to move forward, but none of those booster groups have come back at this point with any proposal for us to respond to or consider. So, where we are right now is there is no proposal to consider, but we do have groups actively working towards developing proposals that, when they're ready, they'll come back, when and if they're ready, they'll come back with a proposal for us to consider.
And those issues will be addressed if and when they do come forward. Thank you, sir. And Kirby Nielsen, please, Mr. Nick Nielsen.
Well, good evening. My name is Kirby Nielsen, 7408 Falls View Circle, Delaware, Ohio. And you just took all of my thing away here with your explanation, so, well, not maybe quite all. So, let me go ahead. You know, when I first thought of the turf project, I thought, you know, as long as this was paid for upfront by outside groups, I'd be all for it, you know, as long as the taxpayers weren't involved in co-signing a thing. Conversely, you know, if the taxpayers didn't have any stake in this, I didn't have any objection. But I have this long-term objection now that seems to be gnawing at me, and that's this thinking that there are costs down the road, and that there is a liability, if it, if it doesn't show up right today, at some point in the future, it will be something that we, the taxpayers, need to replace, maintain, et cetera. So, I think that due consideration needs to be given to that. And we do see a lot of talk today about the adverse cost of saddling future or legacy costs down the road. You know, we find so many things in all of our aspects of life that seem to be good at the time, but then there was that cost down the road. So, I'm hoping that a considerable amount of attention be paid to that. Probably the thing I can add that maybe hasn't been discussed is I am maybe not totally up to date on all the pros and cons, arguments that have been made. But I think what I've come to realize is what I don't know is what really bothers me. Today, the only argument really kind of that I have heard is that, first of all, it doesn't going to cost us to maintain it, it's gonna be a gift, not gonna cost us to maintain it, and that other schools have it. So, here are some good reasons why we should put the turf in. But what I'm missing is any information about how does this help any of our football programs, lacrosse programs, band programs? How does it help them excel? What day, in what ways does it make them better? Does it help them reach a higher level of excellence? Or will it help Olentangie students get more scholarships? And most important of all, will the turf improve grade point averages? And I suspect the answer to each of these things is no. So, I think, maybe to summarize it, artificial turf is a luxury. It's not a teaching expense, it's not needed for teaching. And that perhaps the money that we raise for scholarships, or, excuse me, for artificial turf, maybe we should turn that attention to scholarships and other sorts of academic ventures. I'm just sure that artificial turf is not something which is going to increase academic excellence. And finally, I am thankful for your comments. My, my appeal to you is that we did not, this product, this project does not go forward without each of you taking a vote on it, so that the public is aware of where you stand. So, I'm appreciative already of learning that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. McPherson, Diamond McPherson, if you would join us, please.
Diamond McPherson, 2524 Deseret Drive. Well, it's good to see all of you. I've endured my hour here with you, and got really excited to be part of this again. But then when Dr. Lucas talked about the 450 tons of rock salt, I knew why I don't stick around the winters anymore. Let me tell you why I'm here. It's to talk about something you talked about, Mr. President, and you, Dr. Lucas. It's about the changing housing patterns here in this district. I have been a resident of this, of this school district for about 30 years. When it was one building, right here, K-12, you've heard that story. I've watched the explosive growth take place over these 30 years. I think this could change this district more than anything academically and in all other ways, if we don't jump on top of this with everything we have. It's that important. So, I just want to just add a few, a few comments about that. As we all know, there's a slowdown in new housing in the district, but enrollment's still 700-plus. Families are, why? They're staying here in their current housing, they're not moving up to a larger home, so they're having more children in their existing home. Condominiums, it's not the latest housing trend, folks. The cities and the townships and the counties around us need dollars, and that's driving these apartment complexes. The current economic situation is creating uncertain future in the minds of a lot of people. Therefore, families are renting more as a result of that, they're not making the commitment to own property. The developers are seizing on these renting trends. We've seen that happening, and it's only gonna continue. These are business people that, that need to build to make money, and Olentangie Schools is now starting to see this. I think it's time for this school board and this Board of Education to get hugely involved in this issue. We must act, or we're gonna be acted upon. It's really that simple. And, and we certainly don't want that to happen to us, to be acted upon. So, we must take the leadership on these important issues. I would strongly submit that Southern Delaware County is what it is because of Olentangie Schools, not because of Powell, not because of the parks, not because of Orange Township. All those things are important. This area is what it is because of its commitment to the Olentangie Schools and to single-family housing. These very large apartment complexes, as you know, are being now considered around the district. I would submit there are more than you've talked about that are on the drawing board. They really only work for the developer, they don't work for us. And the cities and township, particularly the cities, the four cities that cover this district, Columbus, Westerville, Delaware, and Powell, it's city income tax, folks, it's city income tax, and they want the income tax dollars, and the schools, to be blunt, get thrown under the bus. And it's a huge mismatch of revenue and expense. So, I really believe what one of you said earlier, this is something everybody can rally around, because it will dramatically impact our finances. There's a cost shifting that would happen, and that upside down should be worth millions of dollars per year. And you know what it costs to build buildings, and you know what it costs to educate children. And besides all that, the community infrastructures can't handle all these additional folks. So, my suggestion for serious consideration for this Board of Education is to do what you talked about doing, but to do it with a great enthusiasm. And keep it on your agendas, develop aggressive, action-oriented, measured objectives for the superintendent, for the administration, and for yourselves. Rally the community around these objectives. I'm here to tell you, I bet, I bet I got 50-plus people that have joined with me. I've testified at these last two zoning meetings, as some of you know, and, and it's only a matter of getting this community organized, and we can have hundreds of people rallying around these, hundreds of things.
You have 30 seconds.
Okay, gotta hurry then. Let's, so let's use all of our resources here, use the committee structure you have, educate these elected officials in all these townships and cities as to what they are doing. So many of them don't have the experience, they can use your help. And develop new ratios on, don't use past ratios on occupancy. It's not, the past is not gonna repeat itself here. It's a brand-new day. Folks are gonna move into this area because of the school. They will stay here a few years, they have no skin in the game, and we can't let that happen, folks, so, nice to be with you. I'm available if you want to use me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I just have a clarifying statement. On the proposals that we know of in Orange Township, it looks like they could be annexed into Columbus. That doesn't mean they go to Columbus Schools, I want to point that out. That only means they're in Columbus proper, but they stay in our schools. Columbus- Columbus proper has a lower density. And so if we can stop that annexation from happening, I would strongly support it because the tax money that would be garnered from that transaction would, would not benefit the school district, and the students that would be coming in would, would adversely impact the district.
Columbus did that to Hilliard, they did it to Westerville, they started doing it to us. So I guess Jeff's report in October, it'd be helpful to see the impact of the single-family development versus the more dense development and how you can all understand the puts and takes.
Yes.
A prime example is to look to Hilliard. They have a large portion of their school district in Columbus proper, but they go to Hilliard City Schools, and they are seeing increased apartment development now. And, you know, they're very similar to us, so, you know, that's a district to watch to see what happens.
Okay. We have three discussion items, and the first one is a reading of board policy for third-grade guarantee. And Ms. Martin and Mr. Fiddy, if you will join us, please, and it's up to date on that.
I apologize for third-grade guarantee arriving late. Neola is typically not so delayed in trying to get their information out. But there are three policies regarding the third-grade guarantee, and I'm not sure where Mr. Fiddy is at right now, but, because I'd like him to go over this information with you as well. You do have, you have two revisions to look at tonight, and you have one new policy. The new policy, 2623.02, is the newly-written Neola language, and I believe it gives the details of that third-grade guarantee, and it's pretty self-explanatory if you read through it. There's not a lot of options with that policy, and so as you look through it, it's fairly clear-cut. And then 2623 and 5410 are the revised policies. And there's a few changes that strike through some 2623, which on page four of seven and five of seven, that Neola has recommended strike through. And 5410, which is a current Olentangie policy as well, which is our language, and it only has one bolded sentence added to it at the very top, if you noticed that. And I'm just.
He must have been driving the gray Accura.
So the third, the third-grade guarantee policies that we discussed at the last meeting are pretty much as we anticipated. The final language was pretty much spot-on with what we were talking about last time. The third-grade guarantee policy, 2623.02, is the new policy, which pretty much follows the language from the legislature. The student assessment and academic intervention services policy, 2623, is, let me try to get this right. We just had to redact some, some language that was in conflict with the new policy language, and that's noted here. And the 5410 promotion placement and retention policy simply needed a sentence added that says that we will follow the provisions in the third-grade guarantee policy. Pretty straightforward as it was last time. Any questions?
I just wanted to make a statement. I've been following this as it moved through the legislature this spring. It was an idea that came out of Governor Kasich, and I was, I made sure to keep the board up to date with this legislation as it came through. I sent them numerous emails so that they would know what to expect. And after reading the policy, really, if you read the law and read the policy, you